Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay of Alodhi and Morse Stadium, Antay Kalorob. The acronym is AMPAC, and the Chief Judge of Coastal Court. Today is Class 91, Class 91. What do we learn in Class 90? Well, we're still going over the Charter of the United Nations of 1945, Chapter 6, right, about the Pacific Settlement dispute. But what are we learning in Chapter 33, right, or should I say Article 33 of Chapter 6? We're learning about how to settle disputes, right? Everything about settling disputes is all about the pen, Morse. It's a pen war, right? It's a pen war. What does WAR stand for? W-A-R, it's an acronym. What does it stand for? It stands for Words and Reference Points, right? When you're dealing with a pen, it's a pen war. When it's a pen war, it's an acronym of WAR. W-A-R, what does it stand for? Words and Reference Points, because that's what you're dealing with. Proper written instruments, right? What is the documentary evidence? It's all about documentation, it's paper, right? So, as we continue to study Article 33 of the Charter, it's all about mediation, then arbitration, then judicial settlement, right? But mediation and arbitration about political, political posturing and trying to negotiate around the political documents, right? Then last but not least, it's judicial settlement. You got political first, then judicial, right? But on the political side of it, it's who can master the art of pen, the art of war, of words and reference points, documentary evidence, i.e. who has the treaty, right? Who's dominant in the treaty? Because treaty's supreme law of the land, right? So if the Moors are dominant in the treaty, we're the custodians of the treaties, right? We're the trustees and the managers of all of our Moroccan treaties. That means we have to master the pen, right? And we have to master politics, because we have to master what's called peace and security. And last but not least, if in fact, we have to use what's called self-defense, then you get into military reforms. But anybody can get into a fight, but can you actually do what's right by the pen first, right? And that's what we're learning, right, through Article 33 of the Charter. This is very important for Moors to understand. What else about Article 33? Well, we're learning about mediation, arbitration, judicial settlement, but we're also understanding this word called "to resort to a regional agency." Because a regional agency has a tendency to maintain peace throughout that continent, right, throughout that region, throughout that, that universal standing in law, that geographical location, right? So everything that you're doing right now, Moors, in terms of studying international law, we have to learn how to come together. Because we have to protect the rights of not only the state, but we also have to protect the rights of the continent, i.e. the region, right? So what all the Moors have to understand is, we start to move forward, we all have to come together as one party, right? Even though we have our autonomous states, we still have to come together as one party. We've got to take all our constitutions and combine them into one, right? That's called ergo omnis parties. But the only way for us to officially do that, we must have what's called a legal nature. What's the legal nature? Contracts that bind us, that give us the right to have interest in each other's disputes, right? What type of disputes? Human rights disputes. So if a foreign state is infringing against our rights, then our other Moroccan states can come and support AMPAC, as an example, right? So that's what we're learning in Article 33. We're learning how to come together, put together a regional agency of Moroccans to create a hub and spoke to protect each other, right? So such as the Wazir Regional Council, which is a convention that's being drafted at this time, right? So the Wazir Regional Council, the WRC, right? Will act more or less as the administration, the judicial. The education of economic, financial, military reforms on behalf of the Moors will create a centralized governing body that will assist all the Moors. Where do we find information that supports that? When you look at the Treaty Affairs of 1912, Article 1, it had six principal objectives that France was going to do on behalf of the Sultan, because the Moors wasn't doing it yet. What were the six principles of Article 1 of the Treaty Affairs of 1912? We talked about establishing what? Reforms based upon administrative, right? Judicial, educational, economic, financial, and military reforms. And that's what the WRC is going to do. It's going to help all the Moors, right? We're creating a regional agency, all right? So we can come together as ergo omnis parties and enact a declaration of intervention. So today, we'll learn more about the Declaration of Intervention. So let's go ahead and jump on in, all right? So you know AMPAC always starts off the Constitution? The Constitution represents the first step in our liberation of our occupation, right? We have to get rid of the occupation of colonialism, right? Colonialism means what? The colonies are controlling what? Our territory, our land. But what are they controlling with? Use of force, right? As well as capitulation. The Moors have agreed through capitulations to allow the United States to maintain a military presence in our land, to hold on to what's commonly known as their civil and criminal courts, and enforce their legislation against us. So when I say what the Moors have allowed, let me expand on that. The only way we've allowed them to do it is because we didn't understand the only way to reject the United States' extraterritoriality jurisdiction is that we had to enact constitutions. That is the rejection letter. That is the letter of intervention. This is the Declaration of Intervention. It is intervening, right? It's getting in the middle of a dispute between Moors and Americans. But you needed a declaration of intervention, which is your constitution. It's just a proper written instrument. A declaration of intervention is about human rights. So therefore, the Constitution has come in to protect the human rights of Moors of that particular territory under what's commonly known as Udi Passevadi's juris. The Constitution acts as a declaration of intervention to decolonize that particular territory that you now have claimed and restored through your constitution, your latitude, longitude, the geographical coordinates of your state. This is a human rights declaration of intervention, all right? So without the Constitution, you cannot intervene and get your justice and your peace without the Constitution. It is paramount. It is the first step in getting peace and justice. So when the Moors say, "No justice, no peace," my question to you is, where's your Constitution? Because your Constitution would come in and declare the intervention on your own behalf with your own pen to stop the so-called racism. Because it's not racism, it's your status. Your status is still Moors subject instead of Moroccan national. That's the problem. But the only way to become a Moroccan national, you've got to have a declaration of intervention commonly known as a Constitution, all right? Let's get into the class. Okay, as the Moors know, this is United Nations Charter, right? And there are Articles and Chapter 6, Pacific Settlement dispute. As a quick recap, right now, what we're really underscoring right now is about, okay, how do you settle disputes? Okay, well, you need mediation, arbitration, judicial settlement, right? But you also need to resort, resort to a regional agency, or arrangement, or other peaceful means of your own choice, right? So that's what we're learning right now. We're learning about ergo omnis parties, and we're learning about Declaration of Intervention. Let's go ahead and continue studying about this, okay? Okay, so so far, in Class 90, we went over the International Court of Justice handbook. We learned more about the intervention, right? Because the ICJ gave us the answers to the test. They said, "Go back and study the International Court of Justice statutes, Article 62 and 63," right? They're giving you insight, right? They're telling you how to go back and study chess master games that's already been played. Go back and study the moves, right? Because this is a group-on-group dispute. These Moors come together, right? Our states versus who? The United States of America. Based upon what? It's based upon our estate. We're trying to restore our states, our e-state. And the only way to do that is we have to fight with a pen. It's all about politics, right? So we're learning on an intervention, right? And if the Moors don't know how to use the proper written instrument and the competency of their pen to understand politics and judicial settlement, then we'll never get our states back. So when the ICJ says, "Go study Article 62 and 63 of the ICJ statutes," that's exactly what Moors should do, right? So we went over Article 62 and 63. Keeping in mind, Article 62 is a recap. Section 1 says, "Should a state consider that it has an interest in a legal nature, which may be affected by the decision in the case, it may submit a request to the court to be permitted to intervene." So when the Moroccan states come together and we petition the ICJ, the other Moroccan states will say, "We're a party to this dispute as well." Because the Moors have already signed a legal nature, i.e. a contract, that made all of our states binding upon each other, right? All our states are going to be binding based on the fact that we got each other's back, right? That's what the WRC is about, because that's a convention, a regional convention. Then we're going to quickly move into an international treaty organization that further underscores the security of self-defense, right? Which creates another ergo omnis party and creates another opportunity for us to come together to write a declaration of intervention. We're talking about interventions today, right? So Article 62 and then Article 63, Section 1. Whenever the construction of a convention to which states other than those concerned in the case are parties is in question, the registrar shall notify all such states forthwith. You see? You see the word "convention"? Whenever the construction of a convention, the WRC is a convention. The Wazir Regional Council. So all the Moroccan states can be parties to a suit at the ICJ. We can come together and come in as respondents as one state, all right? So we're learning this by studying the ICJ handbook, the answers to the test. Imagine that, right? Okay, so moving on. So the Moors need to create a legal nature that creates an interest for all of us to be interested parties, for us to have the right to come together, right? So this is the first step. It's about the draft Articles of the United States and Morocco Treaty Organization, right? As well as the draft Articles to establish the convention in the Empire of Morocco, which is the Wazir Regional Council. These are very important political chess moves, because all these documents are political in nature. But you need the documentary evidence to submit to a judicial branch. Then it becomes a judicial branch issue. The judges are looking at these documents that we wrote in advance, you see? This is political chess to prepare for a court battle. That's what it's all about, all right? So we're building up. So an intervention is really about someone coming to the rescue to protect someone else's human rights. It's as simple as that. So when one state sees another state's rights being infringed upon, they immediately recognize that other states' nationals, the human rights of the nationals, are being infringed upon, as well as the state. Keeping in mind, a state is a person in international law. So the state is being infringed against as a person, as well as the other human beings of the state. So anytime you intervene, it's like anyone can intervene if they see a scuffle going on. You can walk up and say, "Hey, hey, hey, break it up." That's called an intervention, right? Everybody on planet Earth has the right to intervene when they see some other type of discrepancy, right? When someone is infringing upon someone else's rights and they're violating their human rights, you have a right to come and intervene. It's called defense, right? Well, states can do the same thing. States can protect other states, because states see other states as persons, right? As well as their nationals of the state. So it's the duality of protecting the state as a person, as well as protecting the national state. That's what the Declaration of Intervention is all about. It's about one state intervening to help another state, because another state is being punked by another state, right? So that's what Declaration of Intervention is all about. It's about human rights. We'll learn about that today, okay? Okay. Okay, Sister Nolan, let's go ahead and start at the top and read on through.
University of Baltimore Law, Scholar Works at University of Baltimore Law, Baltimore School of Law. This is an all-faculty scholarship, faculty scholarship. In 2014, Introduction to Intervention Under International Law. Mortimer N. S. Sellers, University of Baltimore School of Law. M. Sellers@ubalt.edu. This article is brought to you for free and open access by the Faculty Scholarship at Scholar Works at University of Baltimore School of Law. It has been accepted for inclusion of all faculty scholarship by an authorized administrator of Scholar Works at University of Baltimore School of Law. For more information, please contact S. Nolan@ubalt.edu. Introduction: Intervention Under International Law. M. N. S. Sellers. Introduction: The lawfulness or legitimacy of external intervention in the internal affairs of sovereign states is one of the most basic controversies in modern international law. The question arises in three separate but related forms. When is intervention lawful? When is intervention legitimate? And when should intervention occur? Discussion here will focus on the legal question. But legitimacy, morality, and brutal reality all form and sometimes trump the law. They dictate the parameters within which all legal determinations take place, including the legality of cross-border interventions. By intervention, I mean any activity by one state or its agents that influences the actions or attitudes of another state, but particularly the threat or use of force. Because force is particularly intrusive, particularly persuasive, and often particularly resented by those subjected to its power. Since its earliest elaboration by Hugo Grotius and Imre de Vatell, international law has rested on a single analogy and two basic premises. Just as every human being should be free and equal and independent in all those things that concern her or his private interests, so too each state should be free and equal and independent in all those things that concern that state's domestic or sovereign affairs. As reaffirms by the United Nations Charter, this requires both that all nations promote respect for human rights and fundamental freedoms for all, and that outsiders not interfere in matters which are essentially within the domestic jurisdiction of any state. More specifically, there should be no threat or use of force against the territorial integrity or political independence of any state. This raises the questions, what rights are fundamental? Which actions violate a state's independence? And above all, what constitutes the domestic or internal province of states?
All right, thank you very much, Nolan. So, 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 Section 1, right, or should I say, how they opened up? Right here in this highlighted area, more specifically, there should be no threat of use of force against the territorial integrity or political independence of any state, right? So it's all about use of force against the human rights, against people of another state. All states are bound to be good neighbors. The Charter talks about good neighborliness, right? Good neighborliness. We must be good neighbors, right, to other states. But here's the, here's where the Moors have a gray area. Because of the bilateral treaty of peace and friendship of 1787 and 1836, the bilateral treaties created was called a cohabitating treaty. United States of America is a privileged dependency state in Morocco. They've been given a lease agreement through a treaty and a right to hold property in Morocco, to exist in Morocco as privileged Americans to be able to stay in Morocco. The treaty given the right to be here. So therefore, when you start talking about good neighborliness with other states, well, typically borders create a space between you and your neighbor. They got a house, and you got a house. But when it comes to Morocco, we're all sharing the same house, right? So this is where the gray area comes from, Moors. We have to learn how to be good landlords, and the Americans have to learn how to become good tenants, and their lives to run. So when you start to read about this, it's about, okay, well, who has the jurisdiction? Does the landlord have the jurisdiction? Or the tenant? Does the tenant have the jurisdiction? Or the landlord? Well, that's an easy, easy one to answer. Well, what's the supreme law of the land? I.e., what does the lease agreement say? Well, the lease agreement, i.e. the treaties, say the treaty A is supreme law of the land. And who's dominant? Who's the landlord in the treaty? Was the Moors. What type of Moors? Moroccan Moors, right? Okay, well, who's the other party that signed the bilateral treaty? Well, it's the Americans. Well, the Americans are the tenants. So it merely honors intervention. Moroccan Moors have the right to control the narrative of law. So when you're talking law, you're talking domestic law. But our laws oftentimes will always have to reference international law, because when we deal with United States of America and Americans, everything we do with them must be an international law mechanism. Because the Americans are not Moroccans. You cannot create laws that govern Americans. So therefore, you have to create laws that are international law and not just your internal domestic law. You need international law that governs Americans. Because your internal laws are for Moroccans, not Americans. So then that means Moors have to create international law legislation to govern Americans. You see? Because they are a separate state, dependency state, in Morocco. And they have a right to govern their own affairs amongst themselves. But who gets to govern them ultimately? The landlord. No different if you own rental property. Yeah, the tenant's got a right to occupy the property. Yeah, they have a right to what's called quiet enjoyment. But they also are bound to what's called specific performance of the lease agreement. That must be understood. It's contract law, all right? Okay, let's go ahead and get into Section 1.
Section 1, The Domestic Jurisdiction of States. If, as Vatell Grotius and the Charter of the United Nations suppose, states like individuals should be free and independent and enjoy some zone of autonomy that others must respect, it follows that they have an autonomous legal domain of domestic jurisdiction over their own internal affairs. The domestic jurisdiction of states includes those areas that international law does not reach, and that in some circumstances, international law should actively protect against the improper interventions of others. Domestic jurisdiction begins where international jurisdiction ends and embraces those areas not appropriate for international control. The difficulty of regulating intervention arises in drawing this jurisdictional line. Some issues do or should belong to the exclusive jurisdiction of states. Some issues are, ought to be, subject to the overlapping or complementary jurisdiction of both domestic and international law. Some issues are or should be solely the province of the international rule of law.
You see that, Moors? You see, she's intermixing several jurisdictions. One is domestic, one is international, and sometimes they overlap. So Moroccan Moors will have overlapping laws, or some of our laws will be domestic to deal with Moroccan or Moroccan affairs. And a lot of our laws will be international laws dealing with Moroccan or American affairs, which is commonly known as foreign policy, right? We'll need foreign policy to deal with the Americans. But Moroccans are not foreigners. So we need domestic law to deal with the domestic affairs of Moroccans, and we'll need foreign policy to deal with Americans. But yet, the Americans live in Morocco, and the Moroccans live in Morocco. So it's overlapping, you see? So this is why Moors have to become masters of the pen, because we have to set boundaries. We have to know where to draw the line. And how do you draw the line when you're drawing with a pen? These are the rules of engagement. These are the standard operating procedures. This is the legislation. These are the bylaws. These are the covenants. These are the codes, the statutes, right? Ordinances, policies. We have to do a good job with our pen of setting the boundaries. Where does Moroccan law, from a domestic perspective, end? And where does foreign policy begin in dealing with the Americans? So there's hardly any states on planet Earth who have to deal with this cohabitating matter. But I will say this. Study the Kingdom of Morocco's constitution. The King Morocco is a cohabitating constitution, because the King of Morocco, the Arabs who call themselves Moroccans, also identify their Mazi people as being the people, the inhabitants of the land, the Aboriginals of the land. So they're cohabiting. Take a look at South Africa. They're cohabiting, et cetera, right? So we can learn a lot from other states who have a cohabitating constitution or a cohabitating type of treaty. But what makes United States of America different? Is that the United States of America is not claiming they are ex-patriots of Europe. They're not claiming to be Germans, Russians, Polish, British, Scottish anymore. They're claiming to be Americans. And they're claiming the land is being America, and that's a falsehood. The land has always been Morocco, always will be Morocco, and America is in Morocco, no different than an Indian reservation. That's the truth. It's an overlap, an overlay of jurisdictions. So the United States has jurisdiction over Indian reservations, right? So Moroccan law will have that same status. We will have jurisdiction over all of the corporate states. We will have jurisdiction over the United States International Organization. We will have jurisdiction over the United States of America. But yet, the United States of America, the United States and their several chartered states will have jurisdiction over Americans. And Moroccans will have jurisdiction over all of them. That's how it works. I'm just trying to simplify it for you, right? So this is important when we're reading about this whole overlapping, right? Talking about overlapping, talking about jurisdiction, right? See, jurisdiction of states, she's talking about this overlapping. You see? This is important, Moors. She's breaking down different components of jurisdiction dealing with intervention, right? Let's continue.
Drawing the jurisdictional lines between different levels of governance is a ubiquitous problem. Already well rehearsed in the jurisprudence of American federalism or the relationship between the laws of the European Union and the laws of its desperate members, judges and others must discern which issues are properly cosmopolitan and which issues are more properly patriarchal. The United Nations Charter is far from being the only or decisive determinant of international law. But it does embody some broadly accepted principles about the parameters of international concern, beginning with the importance of fundamental human rights.
This falls right there. So the United Nations is giving you some keys here. The United Nations said, "Well, first, no matter what is about states and jurisdiction, let's start with fundamentals." What's the 1, 2, 3s and ABCs? Well, the first 1, 2, 3 and ABCs, the fundamental human rights. The first fundamental human rights is, what's your nationality? Because when you tell me your nationality, that immediately tells me the geographical location of where your state is located. It tells me that you as the national have the jurisdiction over that geographical location based upon that nationality. The fundamentals is, what is your nationality? If you tell me you're Italian, I immediately should think, "Oh, your jurisdiction is Italy." That's your jurisdiction. That's the fundamental, where you originally, your origin, where you started, where your true jurisdiction came from. That's your original jurisdiction. It's about fundamentals. We're talking about that today. It's about fundamentals. We're talking about that today. But let me point out again. Start at the the. The, United Nations Charter is far from being the only or decisive determinant of international law, but it does embody some broadly accepted principles about the parameters of international concern. Beginning with importance of fundamental human rights. That's the beginning, fundamentals, beginning fundamentals, right? Keep in mind, how did this document start? Let's go back up before we keep reading. How did this document start? What was the first thing that was said? It said, what was the title? It said introduction. Beginning. Fundamentals. Fundamentals of what? Human rights. But it's about an intervention. Also intervention about what? Introduction about understanding human rights. That's the fundamentals. We're talking about that today regarding Moors, okay? Let's scroll. Okay, let's, let's, let's start with that sentence again, the.
The United Nations Charter is far from being the only or decisive determinant of international law. But it does embody some broadly accepted principles about the parameters of international concern. Beginning with the importance of fundamental human rights and the dignity and worth of the human person. There are also foundational international commitments to justice, to freedom and to the economic and social advancement of all peoples. So that armed force shall not be used except in the most, except in the common interest. These very broad international interests arise the question whether anything remains that is the essentially internal or domestic affair of states. Sufficiently to exclude the international community or the strictures of international law from interceding to regulate events. Those category of the purely internal or domestic jurisdiction is rapidly shrinking. Just as in the United States, it has become clearer with the passage of time that commerce, the environment, manufacturing, farming, and even crime need regulation from the federal government to achieve a just and beneficial rule of law in the states. So too increases in communication and technology push more and more areas of law into the jurisdiction of international institutions and international authorities. Whether by treaty, by custom, or by the simple nature of the world. Much that once seemed domestic has become international or must be international. If it, if it is to be regulated at all.
You see that more? So how do we make this more germane to us? What the United States of America used to think was domestic. Where that notion is shrinking. Because now everything within this continent is going to automatically become international. Everything. Even though the Moors will have their own domestic laws to govern the affairs of Moroccans. The vast majority of laws we're gonna end up writing is based upon foreign policy to deal with the Americans. So therefore this continent, the vast majority of laws will be based in international law. Keeping in mind that the United States in their Black's Law Dictionary Fourth Edition under the definition of municipal law. It says that their municipal law is a counter distinction to international law. Because they know that international law is about what? Human rights. And the United States struggles with that human rights clause because they know at some point they gotta respect the human rights of Moors. So they struggle with human rights. Because they know human rights is a peremptory norm of international law just coaches. Meaning that there is no derogation, there's no workaround. The Moors have an absolute right to govern their own affairs through their sovereignty and independence states. And on top of that, the treaties gave the Moors the right to govern the affairs of Americans in Morocco. Okay, let's go on to section two.
Section two, fundamental human rights. Fundamental human rights and the inherent dignity of real human beings provide the template and model for the sovereign rights and self-determination of states. Reflecting the extent to which human rights have always been a central concern of international law. The Universal Declaration of Human Rights in nineteen forty-eight and later, the Human Rights Covenants have been extremely useful in clarifying those fundamental human rights in which the international community has the most direct interest. This interest turns out to extend very broadly, reaching almost everything that is necessary for human dignity and happiness. Each step in the greater articulation of international human rights has narrowed the scope of domestic jurisdiction by clarifying the duties of states to their subjects and the concern of international law for the dignity of human, humanity everywhere.
You see what's happening? So intervention is really about human rights. Who can intervene to help deal with a human rights violation? That is the question. But then it gets deeper. Okay, now you gotta talk jurisdiction. Right? Is it, is it, is it an overlapping jurisdiction? Is it ergo honest parties type of jurisdiction where the two parties have agreed to have each other's back? So they can deal with any belligerent, right? Who can intervene to stop another state from infringing against the rights of another state? It's all about human rights, you see? But they're recognizing the state as having a human right as well. Did you see how she prefaced it? Look. What's the title? Fundamental human rights. Now watch how she opens up. Fundamental human rights and inherent dignity of real human beings provided the template and model for the sovereign rights and self-determination of states. So this state is established by the human beings, so the human beings use the state as a shield. Right? So if another state's infringing upon you, what are they infringing upon first? The state, which is the person, is the umbrella that protects the nationals. So the state is sovereign. And the state extends sovereignty to the people. But the state has the ultimate sovereignty. Right? It has to save the nation. That's what the state's job is to do, is, is to bring together the collective administration of the state. The executive branch, the legislative branch, and the judicial branch and all the other branches such as your military reform for self-defense, all those branches come together. And all those branches were established by what? The state, the person, the state. The seal of your state represents the thumbprint of the person. And when that person's right is infringed upon, you're also infringed upon the human beings of the state because the people came together as a republic to create a democracy. Because they voted for their leaders. That's what democracy mean. You voted for your leaders. The republic is the people. Democracy is to vote for your leaders. That's what it means, republic and democracy institutions, right? So when you start understanding fundamental human rights, Moors. We really gotta start breaking this down. We're gonna get into this, okay?
The International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights, ICCPR and the International Covenant on Economic, Social, and Cultural Rights, the ICESCR both illustrate the vast jurisdiction of contemporary international law and a possible limitation on its application to particular cases. Both covenants start by recognizing the inherent dignity and the equal and inalienable rights of all members of the human family as the foundation of freedom, justice, and peace in the world. And both demonstrate the very strong interest of the international community in protecting fundamental human rights. But they also go on to insist that all peoples have the right to self-determination. By virtue of that right, they freely determine their political status and freely pursue their economic, social, and cultural development. Fundamental human rights are best enjoyed in a strong and coherent community, and this inescapable reality provides the point of contact between sovereignty and liberty. Linking collective identity with individual justice.
Okay, we gotta stick a pin in it right here. We gotta pause right here, Moors. This, 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 this is very key, what we just read. You have to interpret what you just read. You have to really listen to what just happened. Okay, what is this section about? This section is about fundamental human rights, right? And fundamental human rights is about self-determination. But it's about first, the first, first self-determination is about human rights, about the people. And then after that, the people can now in their self-determination establish a state. But under the fundamental human rights, one, two, threes, and ABCs. The first question is, is what is your nationality? Because that's the name you're gonna put on the constitution of the state. So if we don't know what our nationality is, we can't even understand the fundamentals of human rights. Cause you don't know what your nationality is. So if, as it continues to explain about human rights, listen. Listen, listen what she's saying right here. But, but under human rights. But they also go on to insist that all peoples have the right to self-determination. By virtue of that right, they freely determine their political status and freely pursue their economic, social, and cultural development. Where is, what is she saying there? Every human being is choosing what their political status is. Let's go deep. Black people are saying they're black. They're choosing their own self-determination to be black, so therefore what are black people left with? Okay, you're left with what? That political status. That you freely pursue, and now that affects your economics. That correct, that affects your social and cultural development. Cause you don't understand the fundamentals of nationality. Because you freely chose to be black. Who else? Moorish Americans. Moorish Americans have chosen what? Moorish Americans, and I say this with respect, but this is AIPAC study session, right? We're here to study, we're here to do research with reference points. Let's break this down, let's understand the fundamentals, Moors. We have to understand this in order for us to move forward with our human rights and then develop a state. Where the state is gonna identify the parties it's talking about. And if there's no such thing as Moorish Americans, then how can you establish a constitution calling itself by a name that does not exist? However, you see the however clause? Watch this. But, they, who's the they? Moorish Americans as an example. Just like black people as an example. But they, Moorish Americans also go on to insist that all peoples have the right to self-determination, so Moorish Americans have a right to self-determination. They can call themselves Moorish Americans, you got a right. By virtue of that right, Moorish Americans freely determine their political status as being what? Moor subjects. According to the treaty, you are a Moor subject. If you're not claiming to be Moroccan, right? You're just simply a Moor subject because you have returned to Morocco. The Treaty of Madrid eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, paragraph one says, you, if, right, any subject of Morocco that's been naturalized in a foreign country must choose between the submission to the laws of the empire and consent to Moroccan government. That's what Article fifteen says. I'm paraphrasing. So listen. So if you say you're Moorish American and not call yourself Moroccan, you just declared your self-determination and you also declared what? You declared your political status as still being wards, wards of the United States of America. Cause Taj Sri Bay taught us, it's not racism, it's your status. Isn't that what he said? Okay, Moorish Americans are claiming their political status as being Moorish Americans. Ain't no such thing as Moorish Americans. Moorish Americans are aliens. There's no treaty that identifies Moorish Americans. And the United States of America does not recognize Moorish Americans either, because United States of America is looking at the same treaties and saying, we don't see no Moorish Americans in the treaties or conventions. So Moorish Americans are aliens, so therefore Moorish Americans' political status, and I say this respectfully, could we here to learn? Moorish Americans are aliens. They don't exist. They're denizens, denizens at best. What is a denizen? That's a person stuck between an alien and a subject. By definition, look it up, Black's Law Dictionary. So what did the United States of America do? They said, we're gonna do these denizens a favor. We're gonna promote them. We're gonna take them from alien to subject and then from subject, Moor subject, we're gonna make them citizen in United States of America under the fourteenth amendment. Now, the fourteenth amendment, you look at the word amendment, what does amendment mean? It went back and it altered what? It omitted something in the original master contract. What was the master contract? The Constitution of United States of America. Okay, now you go to Article three, section two, clause one, it talks about citizens or subjects. So they went in and omitted the word subject and made all the Moor subjects citizens. That's what they amended. That's called fourteen amendmentment. You amended something from the master contract. Well, they don't tell you what they amended, do they? They went back and amended Article three, section two, clause one, admitted, omitted the word subject, made all the Moors citizen in United States of America. So now the Moors say, oh, we Americans. Our political status is Americans. But then you turn around and say, but you're not a citizen in United States of America, you got your own jurisdiction. United States of America don't have jurisdiction over me. That's what Moors keep saying. I say that respectfully. But it's the truth. Right? So listen. We're talking fundamental human rights. But if we don't understand the fundamentals, we can't go to box two. Right? So let's study the fundamentals. We can't go no further because section three is about independence. We can't get independence if we don't know who we are. Ain't no use in us going any further to independence until we know who we are first, because international law said first about fundamentals of human rights. Let's study the fundamentals of human rights, right? So watch this, Moors. Let me give you a reference point, cause I gotta help the Moors. I have to help the Moors. We're all in this together, Moors. We're all in this together. What do I have up here? This is what you call a contentious dispute. What does contentious mean? It mean two parties are interpreting something with polar ideologies, right? They totally oppose each other's ideology. This is a contentious dispute. That's why it says versus. What's happening? Check it out. Noah Webster's dictionary eighteen twenty-eight talks about the copper-colored people are Americans. It says, it was applied the word American was applied to the copper-colored people. But this is the holy grail that all the Moors keep saying why Moors are Americans because they keep getting that reference point from a dictionary. But I thought treaties was the supreme law of the land. When did a dictionary become the supreme law of the land? Can anyone please answer that question for me? Never mind, it's a rhetorical question. The answer is a dictionary is not the treaty, is not the supreme law of the land, right? So therefore this contentious dispute is about what? Look at this. Look what Noah Webster's dictionary is competing against as a contentious dispute. Listen. Treaty of Peace and Friendship seventeen eighty-seven talks about Moors, but Moors are Moroccans. Number two, Treaty of Peace and Friendship eighteen thirty-six, it talks about Moors, but Moors are Moroccans. Number three, Treaty of Madrid eighteen eighty, subject to Morocco are what? Moroccans. Number four, Treaty of Fes nineteen twelve, talks about Moroccan subject, Article six of that treaty. Number five, Act of Al-Dusar nineteen oh six, talks about Moorish governments, talks about Moors, and Moors are Moroccans. Go to Article ninety-six. Now we're gonna go deeper, cause we're talking about fundamentals. What's the fundamental? First you have to know your nationality in order to understand the geographical location where you have jurisdiction, and wherever you have jurisdiction, you can enforce justice with your courts. So listen. This is a contentious dispute that Moors are dealing with, and, and this, this is not an easy conversation to have, because I recognize Moors are really struggling with this. They're frustrated. They don't know what to think about this. This is They don't know what to think about this. This is, this is new to them, right? But let's break it down. Let's give the Moors reference points in class ninety-one, okay? Here we go. If this was a card game, this is what you call full house, royal flush. These treaties, supreme law of the land versus a dictionary, that's called a bluff. That's the truth.
Yeah.
Because when a dictionary have, have higher status than five treaties. Who on planet Earth can say that these treaties are null and void regarding the fundamental human rights status of nationality versus this dictionary? Who keeps saying that Noah Webster's dictionary trumps all these treaties? But wait a minute. A lot of people don't even know about all these treaties. All the Moors have been studying is the treaties of peace and friendship. And guess what happened in the Treaty of Peace and Friendship? It never referred to the so-called nationality. It just kept referring towards this more. But you were supposed to know that more was Moroccan. So the Moors have only been studying these two treaties. They never took the time to study Treaty of Madrid. They never took the time to study Treaty of Fairs. And they certainly didn't take the time to break down the Act of Al-Dusar. Why isn't it that they never talked about the Madrid Fairs or Al-Dusar Treaty? You know why? Because it points out the nationality that we are Moroccans. Let's go to the reference point, so we can go ahead and put this to rest. Because we can't keep saying that Noah Webster's dictionary is the documentary evidence that you can take to the International Court of Justice and say, "We Americans." You see right here, Noah Webster's dictionary saying we're Americans, so we're Americans. That's not the way it works. What do you take to the ICJ? What do you take to counsel court? What do you take to the Supreme Court of your state? You take trees and constitutions. That's the documentary evidence. Let's, let's get into this, Morse. We're talking fundamental human rights. This is the Treaty of Peace and Friendship eighteen thirty-six, but the language is the same as seventeen eighty-seven, right? Only, only real change was Article twenty-five, alright? So we go down to Article six. Let's break this down, Morse, cause we, we have to do this. We're talking fundamentals right now. This is AIPAC study session to break down fundamentals. Morse has been studying Morse science for decades, but we still gotta have a fundamental class. Because we're all in this together. We gotta come together as a collective, okay? Noah, can you read Article six for me, please?
Article six. "If any more shall bring citizens of the United States or their effects to His Majesty, the citizen shall immediately be set at liberty and the effects restored. And in like manner, if any more not a subject to these dominions shall make prize of any of the citizens of America or their effects and bring them into any of the ports of His Majesty, they shall be immediately released and they will then be considered as under His Majesty's protection."
What's happening? It's making a distinction between two parties. Who are the parties? It identifies it. It says, "If any more." That's the first party. Well, who are the more, Moors? We'll prove that. "If any more shall bring citizens of the United States." Well, who are the citizens of the United States? Well, it tells you right here. It says, "Americans," right? It says right there, "Americans." Americans. The Americans are the citizens of the United States. Well, how Moors claiming to be the Americans if in fact in the treaty, it talks about two parties? Moors and Americans. Well, who are the Moors? Moroccans. So it's Moroccans and Americans. That's what the treaty says. It's two parties, bilateral treaty. Where Morse, he said, "We're the Americans." Then tell me, who the heck are the Moors and the Americans? Are you saying we're the same two people that wrote a contract amongst ourselves? This is a bilateral treaty with two separate parties, but we claiming to be both the American and, and the Moors are the American. Well, who the heck is Moroccan? Will the real Moroccans please stand up? I say that respectfully. Listen. Now, we get into the Treaty of Madrid, which is commonly referred to as the Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty. Now you're gonna find out why no one talks about the Treaty of Madrid. Why? Okay, I'm gonna go to Ctrl F. I'm gonna put in nationality, right? I'll put in nationality or Moroccan, I should say, Moroccan. Right here, the first thing pops up soon as you start to read, right? Right here at the beginning, the first thing is gonna open up and talk about nationality. The United States wrote this as footnotes. It says right here. Uh, it starts right here. Extraterritorial jurisdiction in Morocco relinquished by the United States October sixth nineteen fifty-six. Then it continues, says Article fifteen relating to Moroccan nationality. Obsolete and without effect. Now, we know that's a violation of human rights, right? Don't worry about the obsolete and without effect. Don't, don't feed into that. What's remain here? The United States themselves identified the parties. They said what? Article fifteen of the Treaty of Madrid eighteen eighty, Article fifteen relating to Moroccan nationality. But Moors turn around and call themselves Morse Americans. No wonder they don't talk about the Treaty of Madrid. Because in the Treaty of Madrid, it disclosed the real nationality. Okay, let's go on to the next area. Okay. Right here, right under Article sixteen, you already know about Article fifteen. I've gone over a hundred thousand times. But under here, footnote, okay? Footnote. Hey, United States note, March seventeen nineteen fifty-nine, addressed to Moroccan Ministry of Foreign Affairs. Refer to a note from the mystery date of October eighth nineteen fifty-eight in which the embassy had been informed that the Moroccan government had decided to strike all prescriptions relating to Moroccan nationality from the text of the Madrid Convention. The United States wrote this. In the footnote, they identified a party. They recognized Moors as being Moroccans. You know why they recognize Moors as being Moroccans? It's because the United States of America are the Americans. They know who the other party is of the contract. Then it continues, right? It says, "The United States notes said in part, quote, 'The government of the United States of America, the Americans, having you allowed to relinquish certain rights in Morocco with the reemergence of Morocco into independence in nineteen fifty-six, considers that in line with historical developments, Article fifteen of the Madrid Convention of Protections of eighteen eighty has become obsolete and without effect.' Quote, 'The government of the United States takes due condescension, therefore, of the action taken by the Moroccan government as set forth in his above cited note, which the United States government understands to refer only to Article fifteen of the Madrid Convention of Protections of eighteen eighty.'" So the king of the kingdom of Morocco, Mohamed the Fifth, was trying to sign something with United States of America to remove Article fifteen. Cause Article fifteen of Treaty of Madrid is what? The nationality clause. It's a nationality clause. This is why Moors don't wanna talk about the Treaty of Madrid. Cause it would undermine the fact they keep using Noah Webster's dictionary to say that we're Americans. Because they know if they keep saying treaty's supreme law of the land, then what is our nationality in the treaty? Moroccan. Let's continue. Treaty of Fairs. Protector Treaty between France and Morocco. Right? Let's go down to Article six. What does Article six say? Article six, "The diplomatic and concert agents of France shall be charged with the representation and protection of Moroccan subjects in interest abroad." Why don't the Moors teach about the Treaty of Fairs nineteen twelve? The Moors don't teach about the Treaty of Fairs nineteen twelve. And I say this respectfully because we're talking truths. If the Moors had been teaching, past kids, about a nineteen twelve treaty, the Moors would have automatically known they're not Morse Americans. They would have known that according to this treaty, this treaty's supreme law of the land, that the Moors are Moroccans. And they're also subjects. How do we end up being subjects? Well, if you go back to the Treaty of Madrid eighteen eighty, it talks about us being subjects, Article fifteen, right? Article fifteen, "Any subject of Morocco." We're subjugated in Morocco by the colonists. But our nationality never changed. What changed? The United States of America used a pen. They had stated and hypothesized our nationality. And turned us into Americans on paper. But your nationality remains the same. You've always been Moroccan and you always will be Moroccan, no matter what Noah Webster says. Let's go to another treaty. Act of Al-Dusar nineteen oh six, another treaty, convention. Let's go down to, let's go Ctrl F. Let's go down to Article ninety-six. This is a treaty. We was taught that treaty's supreme law of the land and the treaty identifies the parties. Why? Cause it's a contract and in all contracts, the parties must be known. Can I ask y'all a question? Have they mentioned Noah Webster yet? No. Let's continue. Article ninety-six. So as you can see, Morse, in this treaty, it's got French over here, English over here, alright? So in Article ninety-six, you see the word Moors, right? You see Moors? But what's the equivalent in French? Moroccan. So Moors means Moroccan. Right? Let's continue. Okay, here we go again, okay? Moorish government. What is Moorish government? What's the equivalent in French? Oh, right there, Moroccan. Let's keep going. This is Article ninety-six, okay? Right there, Moroccan loan. What's a Moroccan loan? Okay, you come over here in French. It's just simply Moroccan. Okay, let's go over here. Okay, when France says Morocco, what do they mean? What's the equivalent in French? Okay. Morocco. Did it say America? No. It's Morocco in French. Listen. Alright, here, here, here's the one right here for all the Moors. Now, if you don't get this as a reference point, I don't know what else to tell you. Right here says the word Moors. Not Moors, 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 Moors. Who are the Moors? Oh, okay, what's the equivalent in French? Moroccans. Now do you see why? The Moors didn't wanna teach about the Act of Al-Dusar? It's because the Act of Al-Dusar, if you read the treaty, you resolve the equivalent language in French and you would have known that we are Moroccans in Morocco. The people are named after the land and the land is named after the people. Is the land America or is it Morocco? That's the first question, cause we're talking fundamentals. So if the land's Morocco, that automatically makes you what? Naturalized where? In the jurisdiction of the United States of America. You still coming under the jurisdiction of the Wizard of Oz until you return to Morocco. What about Morocco? Morocco's jurisdiction. It's about jurisdiction, that one word, jurisdiction, jurisdiction, jurisdiction. What establishes the jurisdiction? It's the word state. And Moors were stateless. So therefore, our adopted mother-in-law, called the United States of America, adopted us until we returned back to our biological mother called the Moroccan constitution that represents the provincial state government in Morocco for Moroccans. Listen. So in Article ninety-six of the Act of Al-Dusar, if Moors are Moroccans. Okay, now let's go backwards. So now you go back to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. Article six, now that you have, you're now clairvoyant. You're clairvoyant now, right? Why? Because hindsight's always twenty-twenty. So now you go back to the Treaties of Peace and Friendship that Moors have been studying for decades and you find out that the word more means what? Moroccan. Okay, let's go back to our House of Cards. Treaty of Peace and Friendship seventeen eighty-seven about Moors who are Moroccans. Treaty of Peace and Friendship of eighteen thirty-six about Moors who are Moroccans. Number three, Treaty of Madrid eighteen eighty about the subject Morocco, which are what? Moroccan nationality. Number four, Treaty of Fairs nineteen twelve about Moroccan subjects according to Article six, right? Treaty, number five, Act of Al-Dusar of nineteen oh six about Moors, which are Moroccan, see Article ninety-six. If this was Cards full house versus someone who's bluffing. Now, I say this respectfully. The Moors have been either willfully or unknowingly deceived. I say this with respect. If the Moors don't understand their own fundamental human rights based upon their nationality, since they keep saying nationality is the order of the day, then what is your nationality if that's the order of the day? Do you understand the fundamentals of your own human rights? Or are you gonna continue with this self-determination that creates this political status that keeps you in a more status, more subject status? That keeps you under the jurisdiction of the Wizard of Oz? Because you're acquiescing. There's only three, three statuses that I'm talking about right now. The first status is, are you still in the jurisdiction of the United States of America? Or have you returned to Morocco? And you've chosen entire submission of the laws of Morocco to be Moroccan? Or the third one is, are you an alien, commonly known as a Moorish American? Cause Moorish Americans are stateless. So you in the state of the United States of America or in the state of Moroccan state, but you can't be Moorish American because it doesn't exist. It's Casper the friendly ghost. I say that respectfully, cause it's stuck as a dentist in between alien and subject. And Moors right now are dealing with a lot of pain. Moors right now are going to jail. They're losing their houses. They're losing their jobs. The IRS is leaning their bank accounts, leaning their paychecks. All because they think they're Americans. More specifically, Moorish Americans. So right now, what's happening, everything that's happening to them is based upon negligence, that someone's been teaching them the wrong law. And it's creating punitive damages because Moors are getting caught up dealing with their written affidavits that are patently frivolous and arbitrarily egregious, i.e. void avannicio, because you don't understand the fundamentals of your own human rights. The Moors have delayed their own justice. And that's the truth. So please take this in, Morse. Are you gonna sit here and tell me that treaty's supreme law of the land, but these treaties don't trump Noah Webster's dictionary? Is that what you're telling me? I'll tell you what. I'll see you at counsel court. I'll tell you what. I'll see you at the ICJ. We're talking about it there to see who has the proper status. Cause guess what? When we studied France versus the United States of America nineteen fifty-two and France had the audacity to say that they used a competent counsel court against the United States of America, guess what ICJ said? They said, "Yeah, you said it's counsel court, but that ain't nothing but a bunch of Frenchmen pretending to be Moors." So they kicked the counsel court to the curb because they were what? Void avannicio. They were what? Imposters. They were counterfeit. They did not exist. They were aliens to the ICJ. They did not accept that court as being counsel court. And guess what they're gonna tell Moorish Americans? "We don't accept you as being Moorish American, cause that name does not exist in the treaties." I said all that respectfully, cause we're all- I said all that respectfully, because we're all in this together. That must be understood. There's no way five treaties are subordinate to Noah Wester's dictionary. We gotta stop doing this to ourselves. The Moors got punitive damages right now. At some point, every last Moor should put on the record what happened to them by using the processes of being a Moorish American. Did you lose your house, your car, your job? What happened to you? You got fines you had to pay because you would have driver's license, you'd have tags, right? You, you paid all kinds of tickets, you paid jail, you paid bail money to get out of jail? One of these days, we're going to come up with a whole list of Moors who got punitive damages based upon them standing there Moorish Americans. The list is going to be in the thousands. Thousands. When it's all said and done. All because we thought we were Americans and we're not. You're not American. You're Moroccan. According to the treaties. Let's move on. Okay, now we're ready to move into independence. Because now you can talk about sovereignty and independence in order to protect your integrity of domain. Now we're talking about sovereignty and independence based upon your constitution that recognizes you being in Morocco as a Moor. Which makes you Moroccan. Now it's talking about the independence of who? Moroccan Moors. Alright, let's get it.
Independence. There is an inherent and fundamental value in the freedom and independence of states and their peoples, just as there is an inherent and fundamental value in the freedom and independence of individual human beings. States deserve freedom and independence precisely because they are made up of real human beings who value community and share culture, customs, and local circumstances. These local circumstances may vary considerably from place to place. Geographical particularities, as well as historical and cultural traditions, can be dramatically different in different parts of the world.
Pause. Look what it says right here. You want freedom, you want liberty? You want justice? Okay. You want independence? What does it say right here? We're going to get to this highlight here, but watch this. There is an inherited, inherent and fundamental value in the freedom and independence of states. Your independence comes through what? State. This is the introduction to intervention. You must have an intervention of self. You gotta return back to the state, Dordy. What type of state? Moroccan state, not an American state. You're already in an American state. Because you acquiesced. Now it's time to return to a Moroccan state. Listen. Anybody wants their independence because they understand the fundamentals of human rights, listen. There is an inherent and fundamental value in the freedom and independence of states and their peoples. Just as there is an inherent and fundamental value in the freedom and independence of individual human beings. Moors keep saying, we human beings. Okay, where's your state that says that? Tell me the name of your state constitution that recognizes you as a human being. That's the question. Listen. States deserve freedom and independence precisely because they are made up of real human beings. No justice, no peace. Okay, you know how you get your justice? You need a state. Because when you have a state, it says, states deserve freedom. States deserve independence. Then it says, precisely because they are made up of real human beings. See, the state protects the human beings. But instead, what have our people been doing as a community? We've been marching and praying and pleading. On top of that, we've been sending writs and affidavits. You know what writs and affidavits is? Another variation of marching, praying, and pleading. That's what writs and affidavits are. Because it wasn't sent from a competent counsel court. You need a state. The state deserves freedom and independence precisely because they are made up of real human beings who value community and share culture, customs, and local circumstances. These local circumstances may vary considerably from place to place. Geographical. Geographical. Geograph, what is geographical? That's the state. That's the latitude longitude of the state. Geographical coordinates. That's Oudipassidavis juris. That's erga omnis. This is what we have to understand, Moors. This is your declaration of independence comes from what? The geographical location based upon the fundamental human rights of your self-determination creates the political status of the Oudipassidavis latitude longitude of the earth. What? State. Let's continue.
And among different peoples. This requires and justifies significant variations in local law and customs. Justified differences in local law and customs suggest the benefit of subsidiary. The principle that jurisdiction and decision-making power should dissolve, devolve as much as possible to local authorities provided that local authorities respect the overreaching standards of general international law. This means that in most areas of law, jurisdiction is not often, not very often purely domestic or international, but rather overlapping. International law deputizes states, for the most part, to enforce and implement universal human rights and other international norms internally.
Pause. Are you listening to this, Moors? This is about fundamental human rights. That's what intervention is about. You have to intervene and start with yourself. That's the first intervention is self. Are you Moorish American or are you Moroccan? There is no in-between. Listen. Justified differences in local laws and customs suggest the benefits of subsidiarity. The principle that jurisdiction and decision-making powers should devolve as much as possible through local authorities provided that local authorities respect the overarching standards of general international law. So who's supposed to be the local authorities? Is it supposed to be the police of the United States of America? Or is it supposed to be the police and military of the Magzid, i.e. the Sharif authorities of the what? Moroccan states? What your treaty says is supposed to be Moroccan government? Being the local authorities, you are what? The public services is the local authorities. Listen. This means that in most areas of law, jurisdiction is not very often purely domestic or international, but rather overlapping. International law deputizes states. But wait, Moors kept talking about international law. I listened to him. They keep throwing this word international law out there and I say this respectfully. This is AIPAC study session. We're doing research. Go back and listen to Moors. They talk about international law. Well, you can't talk about international law until you understand you have to deputize a state to represent you in international law. Because in international law, it also recognizes you as being stateless. So when you're talking international law, what political status are you talking about? Are you talking about your Moroccan state that recognizes international law? Or are you talking about you being a Moorish American that's stateless in international law? Tell me which part of international law you're talking about. Can you please at least clarify that? I say that respectfully. These are questions that need to be asked. We're talking what? Jurisdiction. Because jurisdiction sets up the justice. Because in your own jurisdiction, you have justice because you can petition Moroccan courts. In their jurisdiction, you gotta petition their magistrate of courts. That's based in keeping you subjugated as Moor subjects. So international law deputizes states, for the most part, to enforce and implement universal human rights. So Moors have been wanting human rights. The black people keep saying, no justice, no peace. Okay, black people. Okay, Moorish Americans. You know what y'all both need to do as legal personalities? Because your own self-determination, you've branded yourself, be brands. Guess what you need? First, you gotta return to Morocco. Why? Okay, you gotta understand that in international law, it deputizes states. So to talk about international law, international law, you gotta be talking about statehood, right? For the most part. It says, in order to enforce your justice and your peace, in order to enforce and implement universal human rights for your justice and your peace, you need to do what? Deputize your state. That's how you get your justice and your peace. But first, you gotta understand your own fundamental human rights. Of nationality. Who are you? Because you, you don't know who you are, you will never get independence. But.
But when states fail or refuse to implement these rights or even themselves violate basic standards, their obligations to the international community persist. States that violate the universal human rights of their subjects are also violating fundamental principles of international law.
Pause, okay. But. When states fail or refuse to implement these rights or even themselves violate basic standards, their obligations to international communities persist. States that violate the universal human rights of their subjects are also violating fundamental principles of international law. It's all about states, Moors. And we don't return to a state, that means we have chosen, we have chosen to submit to the state of the United States of America, which is the Wizard. The Wizard of Oz. Moors have acquiesced the state under the jurisdiction of the Wizard of Oz. Because the Wizard of Oz has the jurisdiction over all aliens and subjects and Americans. I'll say it again, the Wizard of Oz has civil and criminal jurisdiction over all aliens, all subjects, and all Americans. If you keep saying you're American, guess what? The United States of America has jurisdiction over Americans. Let's continue.
Human rights violations committed by the governments of states or their agents present the starkest example of possible conflict between the right to independence and fundamental human rights, the two foundational principles of modern international law. All violations of fundamental human rights are also violations of international law. But enforcing them or any other international law constrains the independence of states. States owe their duty to respect universal human rights, not only to those individuals whose rights should be, should not be violated, but also to the international community as a whole and to every other state and people. Human rights are erga omnis in that they concern everyone and everyone has the right to take countermeasures.
Pause. Human rights. You gotta catch what's being said here. If you don't first master the fundamental human right, then you have no right to claim to really fight back. Listen. Human rights are erga omnis in that they concern everyone and everyone has the right to take countermeasures. So what are countermeasures? That's called self-defense. You have a right to defend yourself. But the question is, is where are you defending yourself? Which jurisdiction? Are you trying to defend yourself in the jurisdiction of the United States of America? Commonly known as the United States International Organization? Or are you trying to defend yourself in the jurisdiction of Morocco? That's the question. Where are you using your countermeasures to defend yourself? Under self-defense, which jurisdiction? And if you say you're Moorish American, guess what? Moorish Americans don't have no jurisdiction whatsoever because you're an alien. You don't exist. No constitution, no state on planet Earth has recognized Moorish Americans as being a legal personality in a constitution. I'm talking about a competent constitution that's been ratified, deposited, and promulgated in accordance to international law. Because even once you have a constitution, then you have to accede to treaties in order to enforce the treaty. You gotta become a party to the treaty. And the treaty said, you can only become a party if you're what? Moroccan. So Moorish Americans can't become parties to the treaty because you say you're American. And if you say you're American, then guess what? You're on the other side of the contract. You're on the other side of the table. You're not claiming to be a Moor. You're claiming to be American. So Moors have to choose between what side of the table they're sitting on before they can have their independence and before they can enforce human rights as a fundamental to utilize erga omnis principles. Right? In order then to take countermeasures. If you're Moroccan in a Moroccan state, you can take immediate countermeasures against another state. But if you're still Negro, Black, colored, and Moorish American, African American, and Pan-African, and Indian, then guess what? Try to take some countermeasures against the United States of America when you're still in their jurisdiction. You know, that's why they keep calling you sovereign citizen. You know what sovereign citizen means? Domestic citizen that's trying to overthrow the United States. That's what sovereign citizen means. It means they branded you as a domestic terrorist. Not a foreign terrorist. Domestic terrorist. What does domestic mean? They're claiming you as a citizen of the United States. That's what sovereign citizen means. You're a domestic terrorist. You're a citizen of the United States trying to overthrow your own government. You're trying to overthrow your stepmom and your stepmom is like, if you want out of here, you need to go back to your own mama's house. But when you in this house, you gonna act right. So if you want to go find your biological mother, go ahead, but don't start that mess up in here. Go out the front door and go home. Until then, you're going to be branded as domestic terrorists because you terrorizing the house of the Americans. What house? Their jurisdiction. You need to return to your own jurisdiction as Moroccans.
But any response to such violations must respect the domestic jurisdiction of the state concerned and be proportionate to the offenses that have been committed for intervention. Intervention is a term of art in international law. Everything that anyone ever does is an intervention in the strictest sense of the term to the extent that it has an effect or an influence on someone else. We all have and should have very broad rights of intervention in this ordinary sense over almost everything we encounter because we do and should enjoy a great freedom of action. Intervention is a continuum ranging from criticism to coercion. The legality, legitimacy, and practical value of an intervention will vary according to two variables. The intrusiveness of the intervention contemplated and locus of jurisdiction over its target. Intended interventions may be barred either because the effects of intervention would be too severe and because the subject matter of the planned intervention is no business of those who want to intervene. My primary, my primary concern here will be with intervention by force. Both because it is the most intrusive form of intervention and because the United Nations Charter so explicitly forbids the use of force against the territorial integrity or political independence of any state. Lesser interventions may also be problematic, but do not so starkly present the underlying conflict between independence and justice. The United Nations is barred from intervening in matters that are essentially within the domestic jurisdiction of any state.
Pause. So the United Nations can't come and get involved with a domestic dispute. The black people keep waiting for the United Nations to come save them. Moorish Americans keep saying the United Nations is ignoring them and not coming to help them. But they don't realize if you study the international law, the United Nations can't get involved with a domestic dispute. Because domestic dispute is between who? Citizen or citizen dispute. Because Moors haven't recognized themselves. Because Moors haven't recognized themselves as being Moroccans who have their own state. Because if you had your own state, then it would no longer be a domestic dispute, right? It would be an international dispute, state on state dispute. It's that easy. But the Moors keep blaming the colonists for all our problems. The Moors keep saying the UN is the problem because the UN won't come and help us. The UN said, "Y'all need to study your fundamental human rights." You Moors need to understand that you're not Moorish Americans. You're Moroccans and you got about three, four, five, six treaties that can come and help you if in fact you understand how to enforce them by being Moroccans through your three branches government, your Moroccan government, and enforce it through your consulate court. It's that simple, Morse. Stop pointing fingers at the colonists and point it back at yourself. Have an intervention of self. Start with yourself in the mirror. That's where the problem is. It's your status, Morse.
The United Nations is barred from intervening in matters that are essentially within the domestic jurisdiction of any state. And it may be assumed that a similar prohibition is, also applies to interventions by the states themselves. Interventions by force must meet a very high standard and face a near absolute prohibition when they violate the territorial integrity, the political independence, or the domestic jurisdiction of any state.
Pause. So what are we talking about here? This is the triple principle, right? The triple principle of the acta extraterrestri preeminent is what? Sovereignty and independence and territorial domains. And last but not least, what? Economic liberty without any inequality, right? So, but you need a state in order to enforce the triple principle. Listen. Intervention by force must meet a very high standard and face a near absolute prohibition when they violate the territorial integrity. What they talking about, right? Territorial integrity and the political independence. So it's the state, political state independence, and then trying to enforce your territorial integrity through all your legislation and your countermeasures, which is self-defense of your military forms. But you can't protect your community and your people without a state. Because the state gives you what? Domestic jurisdiction of what? Any state. Where's our domestic jurisdiction? Right now, Moorish Americans are in the domestic jurisdiction of the United States of America as adopted Moor subjects. That's the domestic jurisdiction that Moorish Americans are in. You still come under the jurisdiction of the Wizard of Oz. Go look up the definition of the Wizard in Noah Webster's dictionary. And it will tell you, "The Wizard is the British." Go look it up. Which means the Moors are still stuck in the bar association jurisdiction. What's the bar? British Accredited Registry. You stuck in the parliamentary procedures of British Commonwealth statutes. That's the truth. That's the Wizard, the British. They tell you in the dictionary. Look up Merriam Dictionary. Look up Wizard. So Moors have to establish their own political independence. Then they have to protect their integrity of domains through territorial integrity in order to establish their own domestic jurisdiction of what? Their state. Let's continue.
This is not to say that intervention by force is never warranted. The Charter of the United Nations contemplates the use of force at the direction of the Security Council as in Article forty-two, in self-defense as in Article fifty-one, through regional arrangements, Article fifty-two, and in other ways that are not incompatible with the purposes of the United Nations or the territorial integrity and political independence of states. Thus, the limits of legal intervention by force, like the concept of domestic jurisdiction, ultimately depend on the principles and purposes that justify the international order itself, including fundamental human rights, the dignity and worth of the human person, the equal rights of men and women, and the equal rights of nations, large and small. Legally justified intervention. The clearest example of a legally justified intervention by force under the traditional es gentium was intervention to remove and punish a tyrannical ruler who oppressed the people subject to his rule. Jean Vaudin, the apostle of sovereignty, admitted already in the sixteenth century that it is a most beautiful and magnificent thing for a prince to take up arms in order to avenge an entire people unjustly oppressed by a tyrant's cruelty. But Haele explained more prosaically that rulers lose the right to rule when they violate the purposes that justify their authority.
All right, so the United States of America and the United States International Organization will lose, as rulers, as rulers, they will lose the right to rule when they violate the purposes that justify their authority. What justifies the United States' authority this time? It's our own Moroccan treaties. Our own Moroccan treaties through the International Court of Justice in nineteen fifty-two, France versus the United States of America. The ICJ awarded the United States of America, more specifically, the United States International Organization, with a limited jurisdiction over acquiescing Moors. Our own treaties gave the United States of America jurisdiction over Morocco because the Moors are asleep and the ones that are awake are saying they're Moorish Americans. Wrong concept because that's the wrong party. But the United States will lose their rule because they've been violating, but the Moors have also been violating ourselves. We've delayed our own justice. Let's continue.
This raises the question whether interventions to prevent oppression, to defend fundamental human rights, to protect the dignity and worth of the human person, or to secure the equal rights of men and women or of nations large or small, to echo the words of the Charter, are in fact, or ever can be restricted by international law. States parties to the convention on the prevention and punishment of the crime of genocide undertook to prevent and to punish the crime of genocide. And there have been a number of recent military interventions, both under the authority of the United Nations Security Council as in Libya in two thousand eleven, or without Security Council approval as in Kosovo in nineteen ninety-nine, that have been justified by those who intervened as being necessary to prevent humanitarian catastrophe. The problem to be confronted in evaluating armed intervention against genocide or to prevent crimes against humanity or otherwise to enforce international humanitarian law arises less from determining the legality of such interventions in principle than in applying the law and its principles to specific cases. Even the worst violators of human rights standards and fundamental freedoms in their own internal affairs, such as the Putin regime in Russia, cite international human rights standards and the principles of humanitarian intervention to justify their invasions and interference in the internal affairs of other nations. Those culpable for the recent Russian interventions in the occupations of the internal territories of Georgia, Moldova, and Ukraine all purport to respect the requirements of humanitarian principles of international law while violating them in practice. Thus, even the most oppressive states concede the principle that tyranny justifies intervention to justify their own oppressive and illegal invasions.
All right, so the United States of America continues to justify that they're maintaining the human rights of Moors. But the reality is, they are not. The Moors have been trying to fight back, even though we've done it in an incompetent way. We have still been fighting back, nonetheless claiming that we did have some form of governance. Even though we were claiming to have consulates and all type of governments, we were still trying to get our rights back. We're trying to get our state back. The United States of America has been blocking. They've been supervening the impossibility of Moors at varying stages of advancement. They've been blocking, right? But this time is different because the Moors now are restoring states through the Constitution. Now the Moors have what's called privileges and immunities as diplomats, officers, and experts of their states to be able to enforce their political opinion and to be able to enforce their judicial branch government through the consulate court orders, right? This time is different, okay? They won't have plausible deniability this time because Moors are checking the applicable boxes according to the ordinary methods of international law.
Six, and bad faith. The Russian example illustrates the problem of bad faith in international law. Grotius followed Cicero in identifying good faith bona fides as the ultimate basis of international justice. For although law and justice may at times be somewhat obscure, good faith clarifies the result by referring to the purpose of the enterprise. When the law is clear, as in the prohibition of aggression, malfactors will intervene, will invent their own spurious facts to justify their crimes. In the absence of strong enforcement mechanisms, this opens the interpretation and application of international law to aggressors. Will present their attacks as legitimate intervention and criminals will decry their punishments as unwarranted interference.
Pause. Has anybody studied McGirt versus Oklahoma? McGirt versus Oklahoma, I wanna, I wanna say it was August twenty twenty-one. McGirt was an Indian on an Indian reservation. And he took the United States to the Supreme Court. It's McGirt versus Oklahoma. So McGirt was an Indian who took a case against Oklahoma all the way to Supreme Court. And Oklahoma was trying to blame the Supreme Court for interfering. But the Supreme Court told Oklahoma and the United States, "No. Treaty is supreme law of the land and McGirt came in here with treaties and since the United States under what's called custom and usage." The United States had become accustomed to and used to violating the rights of Indian reservations in treaties. And they just kept, continued to do that. And they thought that was the norm until they went to the, until, excuse me, until they went to the Supreme Court of the United States. And an Indian beat Oklahoma because Oklahoma was trying to infringe upon the rights of treaty rights of Indians. Because treaty is supreme law of the land and McGirt proved that. And Oklahoma got upset about it and wanted to blame the Supreme Court. Said, "Man, you guys are interfering. Why don't you maintain the customs and usage of what we've been doing against these Indian reservations?" Supreme Court came out and said, "Uh, everything you just said is paddling frivolous and arbitrary and capricious. Just because you've been violating the Indians' rights all these decades don't mean you got a right to continuously do it. If someone comes in here and makes the proper claim, the Supreme Court of the United States International Organization told those Indians you got every right to enforce your treaty rights." Because treaty is supreme law of the land. So that's what's happening right here. The United States of America will pretend like they're actually looking out for your human rights, even though you're trying to fight for your own human rights. But the reality is, when it comes to Moors, Moors, they get their own states. We were trying to use countermeasures against them and the reality is, we couldn't use countermeasures in their jurisdiction. You can only use countermeasures in your own jurisdiction against someone else's jurisdiction. That's what's happening right now.
Even states seeking to act in good faith will make mistakes when they act as judges in their own cases. The endorsement of the Security Council or the North Atlantic Treaty Organization or the European Union or the Organization for Security and Cooperation in Europe or some other multistate with significant participation from liberal constitutional democracies will give even well-intentioned and generally law-abiding states greater assurance of legality in their international interventions than they would or should have when acting on their own. Multilateral interventions pursued with the approval of international deliberative bodies will be more likely to be accurate in their assessment of the law and facts than deliberation wholly among the officials of any single nation. This points to the great importance of deliberative procedure in determining the substance of any international legal requirement. Good faith requires a certain humility in considering the opinions of others. The requirement of good faith in applying the laws governing international intervention to the facts of particular cases reflects a fundamental distinction dividing the Grotian discipline of international law from the Hobbesian field of international relations. International law rests on universal principles, human dignity, and the value of humanity as a whole. The field of international relations studies power and personal advantage. International law, like all law, claims to seek and implement justice and promote the common good of all those subject to its rule. Whether or not this can ever become entirely true, justice and the common good put significant constraints on development of law in practice. Purported laws that depart too far from widely shared perceptions of justice and the common good will lose their ability to influence human behavior. This is particularly true of international law for which strong enforcement mechanisms do not yet exist beyond the public opinion of states and their citizens.
All right, let's continue. Last chapter.
Chapter seven, legitimacy. Some international lawyers have asserted, for example, that the NATO intervention in Kosovo was illegal, but nevertheless legitimate. Whether or not this was true, in fact, the claim serves to remind us that on vital questions such as international interventions, arguments from legality are not the final word. All law claims to realize justice. But if law fails to do so in practice, other institutions will assert themselves. The concept of legitimacy in any given context signifies having met the standard required for the practice in question. The standard for international law is justice. International law that fails to advance international justice loses its claim on our fidelity, on our obedience, and even on our interest in what the law may or may not require according to its own terms. Law arises from the collective effort to embody legitimacy in determinate rules of institutions. The only difference between legal and other supposedly legitimate action is that law is mediated by procedures that make legality more concrete. But in the case of international law, these procedures are radically incomplete. Lawyers and judges must find international legal rules in international conventions and international custom and the general principles of law recognized by civilized nations in judicial decisions and in the teachings of the most highly qualified publicists. None of these have sufficient institutional authority entirely to supersede the direct appeal to external standards of justice. Such authorities as custom and teachings of the publicist constitute evidence and of the law rather its source, which ultimately arises in those rules of conduct which reason deduces a consonant to justice from the nature of the society existing among independent nations. Powerful states respect and obey international law when they do so primarily because they believe international law to be legitimate. According to the Universal Standard of Legitimacy for Law, which is that law should achieve or approximate justice more effectively than would be possible in the absence of law or by direct appeals to justice. States acting in good faith when they contemplate intervention will look first at the law and to the general principles of law accepted by civilized nations. They will deliberate if possible in the context of multinational institutions and decide when they can in constitution with other nations or consolation, consultation with other nations that respect the international rule of law. Legitimacy in the light of justice is the ultimate measure of international law and therefore of international intervention. And unilateral intervention without the approval of other nations is unlikely to be either lawful or legitimate because it has not survived the burden of persuasion, which is the best measure of validity in international law. Conclusion. External interventions to prevent or punish internal violations of international law will continue to occur for the same reasons that people have always acted against injustice. These include sympathy for the victims, fear of the perpetrators, and the general desire to establish just legal principles by enforcing them against violators. Nations deserve a zone of sovereignty or domestic jurisdiction within which to develop their own histories and cultures, but governments never have the license to oppress or exploit the people subject to their care. The sovereign rights of states derive from the human rights of individuals. Governments that oppress their subjects are violating international law and should expect to face consequences if their violations persist. External interventions can be legal under international law and legitimate. Subspecies artternatias. Whenever serious humanitarian catastrophes require them, and so long as the states enforcing international law respect the territorial integrity and political independence of the peoples they protect. All nations and their peoples have the right to self-determination so that the citizens themselves may decide who their ruler shall be. Just as foreign powers have no right to interfere in a state's internal affairs, so too local governments that deny their subjects' human rights and fundamental freedoms forfeit their right to rule. The limits of external intervention depend on the value of human dignity, the welfare for those oppressed, the good faith of the enforcers, and their humility in the face of public deliberation. Sometimes the use of force will be justified to put an end to serious and systematic attacks on human dignity, but this cannot become the pretext for imperial aggression. Without justice, there will be no peace.
The end. So what did we learn? Intervention, introduction to intervention is all about fundamental human rights. That states can intervene to protect the rights of other states. Because ultimately, the states are protecting the rights of their own nationals, the human rights of their nationals. So we as Moroccan Moors can come together as ergo omniscient parties to write a declaration of intervention because the letter commonly known as the Declaration of Intervention proclaims a proclamation to the world and to the other belligerent state that there are several parties involved to fight back under countermeasures of self-defense. But the introduction of intervention means absolutely nothing if you don't know your own nationality. So what we have to understand is in order for you to get your justice and your peace, first you have to know who you are. Then you have to return to Morocco, to a Moroccan state, and pledge your allegiance back to your biological mother, which is the Constitution. You pledge your allegiance to the Moroccan Constitution. So in closing, just start to wrap up. In the end says, without justice, there will be no peace. Blacks, Negroes, Coloreds, Moors Americans will never have peace. Never. If they don't understand, you have to establish your own justice, and your justice comes through your Constitution and your state. Because the Constitution is the Declaration of Intervention. But before you can enact the Constitution, the first intervention you have to have is with self. Who are you? Well, the easiest way to answer that question is go study the treaties, and the treaties will tell you who you are. And the best way to tell you that is let the good run, as I start to close out. Noah Drouli, Noah Drouli said, study, study, study. And when you have studied well, and would ask me what to study next, I would reply, study yourselves. Because that's where the first Declaration of Intervention starts. It starts with fundamental human rights. It starts with nationality. And if you don't know your nationality, you'll never get your independence. If you can't get your independence, that means you're still going to be either be stateless or you're going to be the stepchild of the United States of America. So we have to study ourselves and go back and look at what, as I start to close out. The next time somebody tells you that you're American, they pull out that Noah Webster's dictionary, you simply look them in the eyes and you say, five treaties in the hand beats one dictionary in the bush every day of the week, and that's the truth. Moors need to take a snapshot of that, carry that around with you. Next time somebody pull out that Noah Webster's dictionary, you pull out your five treaties and say, can you explain this to me that why it keeps saying we're Moroccans and not Moors Americans? That must be the question. We have to put the old paradigm to the back. It has created punitive damages. Alright, so let's take a look at the board as we close out. The Charter of the United Nations, chapter six, it's about the Pacific settlement disputes, right? So under Article thirty-three, it talks about resort to a regional agency to deal with disputes, right? So the Moors need to do what? We need to establish a legal nature and interest, alright? That's what Article sixty-two and sixty-three is about of the International Court of Justice. We gotta create a legal nature through what? A wiser regional council convention. All the more states need to become parties to it. Then we need to create ergo omniscient parties to come together to fight as one state, right? We also need what? A declaration of intervention, which is a human rights intervention. If one of our Moroccan states' human rights is being infringed upon, then we need to all have the backing of that one Moroccan state. We gotta come together. Then we must use constant court as a means of settlement. We gotta use the I C J as a means of settlement. We also have to use the U N Assembly and the U N Security Council for settlement. And last but not least, the I C C, which is the International Criminal Court, for settlement. But you notice, I never mentioned war. It's not about war. With weapons of mass destruction, it's about war with your opinion, words, and reference points. That's what it's all about. I end with that. Isma.